It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. We are doing this by Zoom. It is 6 o'clock and I'll call the roll. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Brown?
Present.
And I'm here. It's because Ray is not here. He's... What did Heather... Jessica, can I ask you, did you call Heather? About the committee assignments?
So she said that she intended to take the vote last night to make sure that this was all ready to go, but she was intending for tonight's committee to be run by the new set of representatives.
Okay, so Paula?
Okay.
Do you want... I'm sure you feel comfortable doing this.
Yep, not a problem. I just didn't know because I was wondering because if Mrs. Brown was here and Ray's, Mr. Guarino's not here and we didn't vote on it, you know, with the committee, but I don't have a problem.
Okay, great.
So tonight we have a discussion recommendation. The first one is the FY21 One-Time Budget Funds Part Two. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, in your packet is a memo concerning this. If you recall, there were one-time funds sent down by the state. It was ended up being a total for the school district of 2.2 million. Back a few months back, this 2.2 million was put in a contingency at the school district, I mean at the city, excuse me. And so therefore we reached out back in back in July and asked for 1,445,000 of that and we have pretty much spent all those funds at this point. These existing items that we're going to, I'm going to speak to in a minute, we didn't need the funds right away, so we didn't ask for it. Now, we'll be moving ahead and so I figured we needed to do part two because the process necessary is for the school board to approve this and then I need to reach out to the budget committee at the city and have the city budget committee release the funds back to our operating budget. So there's 755,000 left in there. What I'm suggesting, we request this for is, the first item is deferred maintenance for the Franklin Street facility. We hope to have the final closing on Franklin Street early in February. All that's left to do regarding that facility is the title search, that's ongoing. So once that's done, we have a hope that we will have a closing with the church on the building in early February. That will then give us plenty of time for Sean Smith and the plant operations crew to get the building ready for September. And by doing that, we'll be able to do a lot of the work ourselves and therefore save a lot of money. So initially we had 415,000 in there. I've talked to Mr. Smith. We think the 425 would be fine to get this building up and running. It might be even a little bit more than we need initially. But what I'm suggesting is when it gets released by the city, it gets put into deferred maintenance. That way at the end of June, it won't go back into the coffers and we can use it to continue to work on the building over the summer as well as potentially if we need another deferred maintenance item because that's one of the areas that the schools need a lot of help. So that's the first item. The second item is 315,000 for IT. That was initially an amount for them. We're going to do an update in a little bit on the SPSRF funds that we received. But this is for, this 315 is for the other six elementary schools to get their get their wiring, et cetera, the fiber at the elementary schools up to date so that we can do a better job at remote and hybrid learning. And it's also going to be used for a backup solution. Basically, right now, everything that's in the district is centered at the Nashua South server room. If that were had a significant failure, we might be in a bit of trouble. This way, we have another backup at North. We get that put in place. If anything significant happened itself, the system could then be flipped over to North and within a few minutes, we'd be back up and running again. So it's a good practice. It's something we haven't been able to afford before. But I think once we put in, it's a long-term solution for the security of our systems. And the other item is a smaller item. We had put initially in the one-time funds, we had put QuickBooks. We were able to purchase QuickBooks in June using some excess funds from last year's budget. So I suggest we move this 15 to the legal services line. We've had significant legal costs this year for a number of different reasons. So that line can certainly use more money. So that's the suggestion. Any questions on that?
I do. So for the 425, I just want to get this straight and I think we need to get some clarification here. Basically because, you know, we don't have schools opening, well, hopefully going to open them in September. But we keep putting money into schools and we keep talking about upgrading and fixing the schools, but parents see no resolution here because last night we, I didn't vote for it. Mrs. Brown didn't vote for it and Mrs. Oden didn't vote for it. To a sustainable level that when that comes down, we can maybe talk about opening up schools again. And that could, that could be a year from now. So I'm kind of concerned. We keep putting money into this under deferred maintenance and yet we don't have any kids in school. That's what my biggest concern and I'm looking at all this and I know we talked about this. But we don't have any, there's nobody in the buildings to enjoy anything at this point in time. So it's just, I guess this is just my comments here. So, Mrs. Brown? Do you have a comment, question?
No, no. So I was actually going to say, kind of argue on behalf of putting some money into the Franklin Street building. So I think the population of kids is the... What is the name of the program that it's going to be moving there? Brentwood, I'm sorry. I just couldn't think of the word. The Brentwood program, I think that is one of the programs right now that we are servicing in person. And I think it's one of the programs that is actually something that both brings students into our district and it services a population of kids that we cannot service in really any other building. So I think that that new location for them is really going to be good for the district and for those kids. And I would actually be thrilled if we can honestly get this done by September. I don't know if that, is that really a realistic timeline to have that prepped?
I, working with Mr. Smith, we're working with architects at this point. But yes, I think we can certainly have the Brentwood program in place by September as well as at least half of the planned preschools. We're hoping to all the preschools, but at a minimum, we ought to be able to get half of the preschools in there. So that would be using basically half the building come September. I think, I think we can do that.
Can I ask where, what's, what specific preschools are coming to? I know we have several programs across the district. Do you know where they're coming from to go into the Franklin Street facility, Dan?
That's a good question, Dottie. I actually met with the preschool people. The answer to that question depends upon if we can have the full area that the preschool is hoping for ready. If it's the full area, we're going to be able to move all the current preschool classrooms. If it's half the area, what we may do is, is move the, let's say Broad Street. Broad Street, I believe, has four preschool classrooms. So we might make sure that that group moves because the other thing we're considering is potentially moving the Title I preschool into Broad Street. So they could stay together, move into Broad Street, and then we could also save $50,000 a year on rent we pay to the church.
Right.
So we've got plans. We've been talking about this, but you know, first we got to close and then we got to get in there and start, start making the the fixes and the cleanup. And like I said, I think we can do it. We can certainly do the Brentwood program and we can certainly do half of the preschool. At least that's what the experts are telling me.
Okay, now the preschool is Broad Street. What about the preschool at, is there one at Charlotte Ave?
I don't know off the top of my head where they all are, but I think there's four Broad, there's four different elementary schools that have preschools.
New Surles.
New Surles, you're right. They have three. I think two we're going to move there, one we're keeping there. One is, I think, specific to a certain type of student. I think we're keeping one at New Surles. So there's two at New Surles, four at Broad. I think there's two or three at Bicentennial.
There's one at Birch Hill.
Yes, and that would be the other one. So I think that's it. I have it written somewhere, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
Thank you. You knew more than I, I knew Broad Street and New Surles. Okay, thank you, Dan.
Any more comments, questions?
No, can I just say, I know Jessica's new here. Another thing we're hoping, bringing Brentwood there, we're hoping that we can bring some students back from out of district placement. One of our facilities, we send, I think, 14 or 15 kids there for $95,000 a student. And we're hoping to have some savings by bringing two or three or whatever is appropriate back into the Brentwood program that will be in the Franklin Street facility.
Sounds good. My other question was the legal services bill. Is 15 going to cover what we are over budget right now?
No.
All right.
It's a start, though.
Sorry about the interruption. I'm taking notes on all this because we have to keep minutes of the meeting. Okay, so are we ready to vote on this? Okay, did anybody want to make a motion?
I will. I will.
Okay.
Let me see. I move to approve the... Goodness, what do I want to say here? I moved to approve the transfer of the remaining $755,000 for use by the school department for deferred maintenance for Franklin Street at 425,000. Fiber at elementary schools and system-wide backup solution for 315,000. Legal services for 15,000 for a total request of $755,000.
Okay, I don't think I got this whole thing. Franklin Street?
I basically took the things from the first paragraph and for just the items listed that Dan has there.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this? Mrs. Johnson votes no. Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Okay. Two yeses, one no's. And it passes. Okay, the next one. Is the Supplemental Public School Response Fund? Mr. Donovan, do you want to talk? Oh, by the way, when we're done with this, can we vote on who would like to be clerk? On this to take, because it's kind of hard to kind of run everything. I'm trying to take notes and do everything at one time because we have to keep minutes of the meeting.
Would you like me to take the minutes for you tonight, Ms. Johnson?
Sure, I did part of it.
All right, for the rest of the meeting, I can write down the motions.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just to let you know, typically a lot of times on these, we'll, at the bottom of the memo, we'll put a motion. So then we don't have to sort of make it up on the fly. I did not do that on this one, but going forward, a lot of times we'll do that. Okay, the Supplemental Public School Response Fund, this is simply an informational, so the board can understand where we spent these funds. Back when this COVID first started, we had, we received about $2.8 million of CARES Act funding, which we were, we had allocated and we had spent some of it for PPE and things like that. But suddenly in November, the state came back and gave us another $2.1 million. With the caveat that the money be spent during the months of November and December or we could transfer costs that we had incurred earlier in the year and charge to CARES Act and move it over here. So it was basically looking at it as another additional $2.1 million, just with a very short timeframe. So therefore, what that, what that required us to do was it limited what we could spend it on because we had such a short timeframe to spend it. So there's a list on the back of the memo or the second page, depends on how the copies were done. And basically lists the items that we spent the 2,156 on. Basically, most of the dollars, dollar volume was spent on IT things. We bought laptops for all the teachers and the directors. We, the upgrade at the high school was charged to CARES Act. We moved that over to this fund and we improved the network infrastructure at six of our elementary schools. So those were the three largest chunks of money. There are a few other items in there related to IT, computer parts for the Chromebooks. Those, that was an expense incurred earlier. It was also a transfer from CARES. And then we purchased a remote software management. It's a way to manage all the devices that are, that are out there now. So, and there's a couple of other smaller items, but basically about 1.7 of that 2.1 went towards IT-type costs, which if you stop and think, we went to this remote learning and we certainly technologically weren't quite ready to do that. So this was quite helpful in that. Other items that we spent it on with the PPE. And another, one of the other large items is the air purifiers. We tested all our HVAC systems. There were two or three schools where it met the standard, but it was lower on meeting the standard than the other schools. So we bought for those three schools, which I believe were Mount Pleasant, Birch Hill and Main Dunstable. We bought some air purifiers so that every classroom will have at least one of those air purifiers, which will help improve the air in the classrooms. So other than that, there's a few other things in there. Most, the way this works is that we've already received the funds. So we set up an account. We charged them everything to the funds. The state will come down in late spring, early summer and review all these costs and give us, give us an okay, hopefully. But I think I was pretty conservative on the types of things. I didn't take any chances saying, I'm hoping they'll cover these. Most of these were handled, were discussed in their FAQs that they sent out when they sent us the funds. Any questions?
Mrs. Brown?
Um, my one major question is, I don't know that all of the laptops have arrived, have, are we adhering to the letter of the rules for this funding or is this going to, something we're going to get dinged on later and have to pay back?
We all, I don't know if, yeah, every laptop may not have been handed out. They've all been, they were all received in. Keep in mind, some of them were received in during the holiday break. So they weren't passed out till after the holiday break. So that, might there be something technical there? I guess possible.
So even if they weren't distributed, we at least had them in the building. We were getting them formatted and ready to go.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question here and we're going to go back into the Chromebooks. We have computer parts for Chromebooks of $30,316 and then we have IT tech for Chromebooks repairs, November, December, of 7,500. So what exactly were the repairs and everything for the Chromebooks?
The parts? The 30,000 is parts that were purchased to repair broken Chromebooks or Chromebooks that needed help in one way or another. The, the IT tech, we hired two temporary people to do two things. A, to get the, the new laptop setup and B, to also repair any of the Chromebooks. I think they spent most of November working on fixing Chromebooks and they spent most of December getting the new laptops ready for the teachers.
Okay, I guess I'm coming back to this, you know, because I'm looking at this. And we're looking at over $30,000. $30,391 if I did my math right here on my computer, on my calculator, right? Of $37,816 that we got in money. And since day one with these Chromebooks, I've been talking about why happened we had some type of damage form for parents to buy insurance like you would a Best Buy in case you spill or something happens with these Chromebooks. And people say, oh, it's not Nashville City of Nashville's money. It's federal dollars. It's, it's not even a question whether or not it's federal dollars. It's a question of being responsible or whatever. I mean, this is from another school district. I keep holding it up. And it talks about problem with Chromebook, defective damage, broken screen, dark screen. This is like, you know, policy that would help. It's, what was it? $25 for one child, $15 for two or something, $30, $10 annual premium, $25 for families on, for families on reduced lunch and free $15. Now 25 for reduced lunch and 15 for free lunch. I think it costs like 50 bucks a year. But this would save a lot on the repairs. I mean, that's a lot of money to fix all these Chromebooks. And so when the government money goes away, the CARES Act money goes away, which is still money from taxpayers, now it's coming out of our budget money to fix something that we could have a policy like this, that you would buy a Best Buy in case you spill stuff on the computer and they fix it. It's worth money. So I just, I keep going back to this because, I mean, it's after last year when we heard some of the things that happened with these Chromebooks, the keyboards, animal urine on it. I think this is something we as a board really need to look at this and offer this to the parents. Because somebody has to be responsible and it shouldn't be us, the taxpayers all the time, to have to fix something. So I don't know. I keep talking about this and we don't go anyplace with it, but...
If I could just speak to that a little. If we do go to a one-to-one or if we decide that we should bring Chromebooks, that students can bring Chromebooks home on a regular basis, then I agree with you. We do need something like that. I'm not 100% sure if it makes sense for all students in the Nashville School District to bring a Chromebook back and forth every day. I'm not sure they're built for that. I'm not sure younger students would be able to care for a device like that. So I know we've talked internally. I've spoken with Greg Rodriguez, the IT director. And if we are going to do a one-to-one, I think he did send a memo out that we worked on together yesterday. I think you're going to have to look at a lot of things because it's not going to be cheap if we're going to do it. And whether it's a Chromebook or a laptop, any of those devices that are going to go back and forth on a daily basis, I agree with you, Mrs. Johnson, that we'd need some sort of a insurance to cover that.
Well, I guess my question is here. We've got these Chromebooks at people's homes right now so our students can work.
Right, but they're already there. There's nothing we can do about it now.
I get it because, I guess because, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into it anymore. I just, that some of this is just crazy stuff that, you know, we look only this far, not for future. And then we have problems where things are broken and then it's like, who's going to fix it? You know, we run out of money. I think this is money that could be better well-spent probably on something else other than fixing all these Chromebooks that we talked about at the end of the year last year. The same issue, Chromebooks being broken. And so, you know, we talk about things and it's going to cost money and why would we, once our students get back into school, why would we be sending them back and forth with Chromebooks or computers? If they're going back to school full-time because that's when we voted on a calendar, hopefully for them to go back to school full-time. So I'm, I mean, if we as board members get confused, the community is confused. So, Mrs. Brown?
Thank you. I was going to say, I think some of the maintenance and refurb costs might also be because the, Greg had mentioned that the Chromebooks were coming to the end of their life. I can actually attest that my daughter got kind of one of the ones on her first round that was one of those that were close to the end of its lifespan. So we had to turn it back in. So there is always, Chromebooks are not like a higher quality laptop that most people make a purchase for. They are almost like disposable tech on a five-year cycle. So I think moving forward, we're really going to have to consider our budget. I know Mr. Rodriguez is like really an expert in that and he really is looking at the longevity of this kind of digital program. So I agree with, if, once we get in a place where we're having students bring devices to and from their house, we should really consider some kind of an insurance program. But I also think that there will always be some kind of maintenance cost because of the way, the direction that education is going. So it's something we need to look forward, look to the future for, for our budgeting. If I can switch gears a little bit, I did have a question before we make the motion on the attorney fees. I think we had approved this on these funds before, but can I ask, is that getting close to covering our added into the 15?
It's, it's still, it's still, it's still over budget, but it was, yeah. But yeah, it was, this fund was pretty clear that if there were costs related to COVID, remote learning, et cetera, and I was very careful when I went through the detail of Attorney Bennett's invoices, that I did not take anything that was questionable. I took things that were all pretty specific, mostly to the the Rule 64 compliance. We've spent a lot of money with him coming into compliance with that. So they did say that if it was above your typical legal expense and it was related to that, that it could be paid for with these funds.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Mrs. Oden?
No, I don't have any more right now. Thank you.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion here to accept this SPSRF spending summary?
So moved?
Okay. Mrs. Johnson votes, yep, second by, Mrs. Oden. Okay, Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries and it's been approved. Okay, now we have the FY19 Single Audit Review. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, just a quick informational point, the single Okay, just a quick informational point, the single audit is the review of all our grants that we receive mostly from the federal government, they're all processed through the state. So as we go through our year-end audit every year, the single audit reviews specifically those grants. So just to give the board some sort of comfort to let you know that the, based on their review, the New Hampshire Department of Ed has not identified any issues of concern relative to the management or expenditure of those funds. So we hope to, we hope to get this every year, we've gotten this every year in the last ten years and hopefully that will continue. But I just, sometimes the board certainly isn't as close to grant funds as it is to the operating budget. We will try to speak to that towards the end of the operating budget this year, but I just wanted to give you a sense that all, all was good last year, so just more of an informational.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on this, perfect, perfect. Any questions? Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Odin?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, perfect. So now we go into winter athletic user fee refunds, Ms. Gingrich.
Hi, everybody, thank you for hearing me out again this evening. In looking at our winter season, again, you have the memo and the information there. Looking at our winter season due to the delay of the start of the season, looking at our shutdown over Christmas vacation as well as the current precautionary shutdown that we're in right now. Many of our teams have lost between five and seven weeks of their season. So looking at much reduced transportation, much reduced official costs, we're gonna have reduced rental fees for our off-site facilities, so it, it only makes sense to me that we look at potentially refunding the winter athletic user fees. Just so you are aware, in the memo, as of last Wednesday was the sixth, the winter collection was thirty-two thousand. As of today, it was thirty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Just to put that into perspective, as of right now, we have about twenty-six percent of our winter fees that have not yet been collected. And I'm, I'm fairly confident that with the shortened season and the number of financial hardship requests that we are getting, many related to COVID, that much of that twenty-six percent unpaid at this point, we would not be collecting at any point. To compare it to last year, our winter total for last year was almost seventy-six thousand dollars. It was seventy-five nine fifty-five. So you can see that we are not collecting anywhere near what we're normally collecting. You heard me speak last night about the much reduced registration fees, excuse me, much reduced registrations at the high school level this year. So that obviously is contributing to our lack of income. Our track students, again, they have no competition season, no state tournament, they're only practicing, so we didn't charge them anything. So there's a lot of factors contributing and I just feel very strongly that if we can refund the winter fees to those students who are participating, I think it would be a nice gesture, not only, but also I think it would be fair. I did put in here, normally in our policy, it does state that if students pay for the first two seasons of the year, the third season would be free. So if we did refund this, the winter user fees, we would collect more money in the spring than we normally do because we would have no athletes who had paid for two seasons already. Because if we refund the money, they haven't paid for the winter. So our plan for the refunds would be to credit to the spring until we know which students are gonna participate in the spring. And if they participate in the spring, then we would offer that credit towards that season. If a student didn't participate, then they would receive their refund in March or April. And to be honest, part of that is simply because why write all those checks for refunds? For people to turn around and send them back to us in about a month when we do our spring registration fees. So I would ask this committee to recommend to the full board that we do issue full refunds of our winter athletic fees.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, any questions?
Thank you. So that compare, the thirty-four compared to the seventy-five nine, is that is that usually just the fees or is that fees and tickets and event?
That is solely fees. Any admission goes into a different line item of the same same special revenue fund, but user fees and admissions to events, we keep completely separately. Our athletic user fees actually go in, are collected and then they're transferred at the end of the year to offset our operating budget. Where at, whereas our admission to events stay in the special revenue fund and that is our only source of revenue to purchase new uniforms.
Thank you, and I'm assuming that we aren't charging admission fees right now since it's so limited for any of those kind of events.
Correct, we did not charge any admission fee for football in the fall. And we are not going to charge for basketball this winter as well as ice hockey. I've had an agreement with Conway Arena, even though normally admission is split between the arena and our, our operating budget. They have agreed also not to charge any admission to our hockey games this year, so.
That was nice of them.
It, it was very nice.
And nice of us.
Yep, and, and honestly, I just, I just feel that with everything that's going on in our community and with you know, the reduced seasons, the small seasons, we're not getting hundreds of people attending our events. We're only getting, you know, a hockey game if there's twenty kids on the roster, we're getting forty people allowed in the arena. I don't think it's fair to say only two of you can come and oh, by the way, you're still gonna have to pay ten dollars to get in the game.
Yeah, I agree, I think that was an excellent call. The
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
While you mentioned admissions, because that's our only source of revenue that replenishes our uniform and uniforms and replaces our uniforms, we put an entire freeze on uniform purchasing this year. So it's not like we're going backwards in that, not knowing what was gonna happen with our athletic programs this year. We just made the decision in the spring, no purchases whatsoever. So the money we collected last year is still sitting there for us to be able to purchase uniforms for next year.
Also wise choice, thank you for letting us know that. So I guess my main question is, do you have some sports that are having full seasons? I'm thinking maybe skiing or any, is any, everything is cut short?
Nothing, everybody was delayed from the start of their season until December fourteenth. Swim normally would have started on November sixteenth, so they lost four weeks right out at the outset, right at the beginning of the season. Ski, even though they are outside, they are off-site, any of the delays and other shutdowns, they have also shut down as well. Just because we still don't want the kids coming in contact with each other, again, not knowing who they're in contact with outside of our presence.
Okay. And are you projecting to have a basketball season like shifting the months? I mean, I know right now it's, wasn't gonna start at least until the nineteenth. Are you hoping to have a full season still or are you cutting games out of it?
It will not be a full season, the end dates for the regular season fall at the end of our February vacation. So around February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and then they'll go into playoffs. But the season is being cut from, I think it was an eight-week season and now resuming practices next week. And then resuming games the week after that season is now about six weeks.
Okay. All right, I think that's good, I do, I just, this is kind of looking forward, assuming that we would move forward to this and we would keep these fees as a credit for spring. Are you expecting to have limited spring sport activities, is that already kind of in the works at the state level that they're?
Yep, so when we started talking about coming back to intrascholastic athletics in August, people were very, very concerned about trying to maintain spring as much as possible because those students lost their entire season last year. So as much as possible across the state, we are trying to keep that season intact. We actually talked in our Division One Athletic Directors meeting yesterday about a couple of different possibilities. We may see a slight delay to the season because if we delay it a little bit, then maybe they can get right outside and not have to have practices inside in our gyms, which is what we're facing right now in the winter. But if we delay the start, we may also delay the end. So rather than cutting off part of the season, it'll just be shifted a little bit. We also talked about delaying it a couple of weeks at the beginning and delaying the other end, the end of the season only one week, so they would lose one week of their season. But we would take that out of the preseason and not out of necessarily out of their games. So we are looking to get as much of a spring season as we possibly can. Trying to preserve, if you think of baseball, softball and lacrosse, normally they play between eighteen and twenty games. If we can get sixteen games in, that's more than any of our other sports have had all year. Basketball at this point, we're looking at maybe ten games instead of the eighteen they normally play. So we're really trying to protect, that was the word I was looking for earlier, we're really trying to protect spring as much as possible because of what the students lost last year.
All right, thank you, I really appreciate that, I think that's great, plus I was a softball player, so, you know. I'm biased.
It's okay, I was a softball player too.
Mrs. Odin, do you have any questions?
And I just wanna thank Ms. Gingrich, I think you've done a really good job watching this, taking care of our student athletes and for, for several, and we've heard from them, it's been a lifesaver. So hopefully we can get back in there and I know you're gonna be watching everything carefully, but thank you so much for what you do for our student athletes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Odin.
Yes, and I wanna say thank you, my daughter used to be a great basketball player with the city. So until somebody tripped her and she tore the meniscus and that was the end of her. I know, I know, it was a long road for her, but I wanna say thank you, you've done an excellent job. You really watch out for our students here and make sure that they get the best possible schedule. And I think it's very important for them emotionally to be with other, with their peers at this point in time. So would somebody like to make a motion for the winter athletic user fee refunds?
I'll make a motion, I move we approve the winter athletic user fee refunds based on the information we have from Ms. Gingrich.
I'll second it. Mrs. Mrs. Johnson votes yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries, okay.
Great, thank you all very much.
No, thank you for everything you're doing and thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you, is it okay if I sign off?
Okay, you deserve it.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
You too.
Bye.
Okay, now we have on the agenda, the second semester bus and parking fees. Mr. Donovan, I guess the floor is yours again.
Okay, if you recall, we agreed to eliminate the bus and parking pass for the first semester back in September or October. But when we made the motion, we did it just for half a year. So due to the fact that second semester, I think, I mean, first semester sort of ends, I think at the end of this week. The board should consider whether they would like to charge anything for the second half of the year. Now, obviously at this point, the students are not back, it wouldn't really make sense to charge them for parking or bus passes since we're not allowing them back in the school yet. Based on the motion last night, the fourteen-day period, et cetera, let's say, just picking a date out of nowhere, let's say come, you know, March first, that the students are back. Would, would the board wanna charge something? I don't feel really strongly one way or another, it's not a huge amount of money. But I guess the only benefit of charging for a, something for a bus pass, if the kids go back, would be we do have a significant, you know, fourteen hundred and seventy-three less free and reduced lunch students than we did last year. That number affects the money we get from the state in our adequacy funding. It's, it's, it's equivalent to about two-point-six million dollars. So if, I'm not sure it would work, but I just wanted to sort of share it with this group to say, if we did go back and we required bus passes, people to pay, the high, it's mainly the high school kids who pay for the bus passes. If a student didn't wanna pay because they were free and reduced lunch, then they wouldn't have to pay if they filled out the form, which is what we want. We really want the form filled out so we can build that number up and get more money back. I'm not a hundred percent sure it's gonna work and unless we get the kids back, it's not gonna work at all. So I don't know if you wanna push this down the road a bit, but I just thought I'd bring it to the board at this point.
Mrs. Brown, you have a question?
Actually, I'd like to just go ahead and make the motion if I can. I'd like to move to waive all bus and parking pass fees for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Odin seconds it. Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Johnson votes?
For me, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't click on fast enough.
That's okay, go ahead.
Gee, I go to the grocery store and I see high school kids at the grocery store working. We know a lot of families are having a hard time. I don't think now is the time to take money from families. Especially on the backs of kids, I, I just, I think it's the right thing to do to waive, I, I just hope the kids get back. So I would, I, I fully support this.
Thank you, since we didn't take the vote yet, I'm gonna support this because I feel at this point in time, if we're waiting for substantial to go down, that might not go down to March or April. What are we gonna charge for at this point in time? We don't even know how many students are gonna go back in. And I don't think at this point in time it's the right thing to do with, I agree with Mrs. Odin and Mrs. Brown. So are we ready to vote on the motion now? Mrs. Johnson votes yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries, okay. Next we have the FY twenty-one December financial report, Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so we will be reviewing the month-by-month financial statement, which is the second one in the packet. There's a four-page one, but this the second one is the month-by-month. So on page one of that second report, we'll run through this salaries and wages. You'll notice in the month of December, nine-point-four million dollars, which is significantly higher than all the other months. The way we record payroll in the district is it's when the pay is paid. So in the month of December, we had five Thursdays, so the people paid weekly, were paid five times. And it's all, also happened to be one of the two months that biweekly people, biweekly people got paid three times. So that's the reason why that number's so high, no concern, it was expected. And then wages part-time, you notice it went up but not as much because we have many fewer people in that, in that category. The overtime still, I did a review on that again, it's running much lower than it typically does. I did have a couple of questions for Plan Operations, they had a couple of schools with overtime and I'm gonna, I can report next month to find out why there was as much overtime as there was, it's not an incredible amount, but it was a little higher than I expected. The temporary seasonal line item, that's a temporary custodian filling in for, there's a few people that are out, that's one person. The wages per diem of the subs now, pretty much the only, we don't have a lot of daily subs coming in, but we do have a lot of subs covering full-time for teachers out on FMLA. That number's lower than That number's lower than we typically see, but it does make sense. The wages elected officials, that's the payment to the board on a quarterly basis. Longevity, there's a negative, but that was making up for an error in previous months. So if you look at that year-to-date at zero, which is what it should be, we will be making the longevity payments to all the unions except for, I think clerical. They will all be made at the end of January. So assuming they, they get paid as planned, you'll see in the month of January, the longevity payment. And then, and other than that one group, they're all paid at that point in time. The stipends number is a bit higher this month because the fall coaches at both high schools were paid, and they were paid in December. So that's why that is a hundred and twelve thousand. Retirement and separation pay, that is, every teacher that did retire has received their lump sum payment. What you'll see now going forward is simply in that line item, when people leave for one reason or another, and they happen to have a crude vacation, that's where that payment will go. So like I said, it's going to be over budget on that line. It's over budget by eleven thousand. But you should be seeing amounts like three thousand or four thousand. You shouldn't be seeing any larger amounts. So that's a quick rundown on the salaries and wages. Any questions? Okay. Fringe benefits, like I said, that's mostly from the city. Those are allocations from the city. So no real concern to us. The bottom line there, educational assistance. You'll notice it's twenty-three thousand. It's higher than most other months, but that's expected because a lot of college courses are, end up in the month of December. So that's when the teachers request their payments. Okay, you'll notice the professional and technical services are our first account that we're gonna overrun. Is legal. This month, it's twenty-seven thousand included in that. Other than the average amounts, there was a ten thousand dollar legal bill related. It was a company, Goldston and Store. They were a group that met with the board. And so that was ten thousand of the twenty-seven. And then there was the Wadley Star Peters, which is Attorney Bennett. There was a total of about ten thousand dollars there. And you throw in the standard monthly bill from Jackson Lewis of four thousand, and another twenty-five hundred dollar payment we made on a legal agreement, and that gets the twenty-seven thousand. So I think this will, I think going forward, hopefully, there won't be too many more one-time charges like that. But there will continue to be some Wadley and Star and Jackson Lewis. So the fifteen thousand that we talked about before will help, but this account will probably be, be something to watch the rest of the year. Most of the other accounts on that page are fine, nothing out of the ordinary. Flip to page two. I always take a look at electricity, heating, gas, and water. Electricity is running well below where we were last year, which is a good thing. It's continued on that pace, so we should have excess funding in that account. Heating gas is actually slightly higher, but it's mainly because the December this year of a hundred and fifty-nine. Last year, it was only eighty-three. That's more of timing when the invoices get put in. That will catch up if you, if you take out the difference in the Decembers, they're running about the same. And then the water bill running slightly lower than last year. But so those accounts, I think, will be fine as we move through the year. HVAC maintenance, you'll notice there was sort of a high number. Now HVAC maintenance, that's where we have contracts with Control Technologies and Siemens. They come in and work on our HVAC units. Typically, those contracts are paid on a quarterly or biannual basis. So that is sort of a lumpy type of account. And then the rest of those accounts, there's not too, too much activity. Those are mostly maintenance accounts managed by Mr. Smith. Okay, we move to other services. Telephone and telephone cellular, telephone cellular, there was a transfer entry. You'll notice November is only fourteen hundred, and it's much higher in December. But that was correcting errors from the previous month. So year-to-date, that'll be fine, and that should settle in closer to a couple thousand dollars a month. Rest of those accounts, they're relatively small, minor ones. There's not much activity through December. And then you get down to the bottom line. It's the regular transportation services. So there, and the following page is the sped transportation service. The invoices are a little bit behind. We do have them in. They'll be input in the month of January. But I did take a look, sort of where we stand on transportation. Basically, if we had gone back to school full-time and paid full amount for all the buses, we would have paid four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more. So we've saved four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars through the month of December on transportation by running fewer, fewer buses and paying the lower rate.
I've got a question on that.
Yep.
So how many buses again are we running? I know we go through this every month.
It sort of changes. I have the dollar amounts, but it looks like we're running about half the buses. Or we were. When we had sped in first grade and kindergarten, and we were running about half our buses. That's about forty or so. So we're paying a full rate on those, and we were paying eighty percent on the ones we weren't running. And keep in mind, we also are saving because we're not running any shuttle buses. We're not running any CTE buses between the high schools. We're not running late buses, so we're saving, we're not paying anything on those.
Okay, we have what, about eighty-four buses? So we have about forty-four buses that we're not running?
Eighty-eight is the number we use for budgeting, yes.
Okay, eighty-eight, eighty-eight. But I knew it was something like that. Okay, so we're paying eighty percent of non-running buses. And that includes that eighty percent, that includes gas and salaries, is that it? How is that broken down? Gas?
Yeah, the cost per day of a bus covers all those costs. So the way the bus pricing is, you pay a daily rate for a bus. And that covers all the costs related to the bus, the driver, the insurance, the gas, everything.
Okay, because I think at the last meeting, I asked for the figures. What was, I think we came up with the daily rate?
Yeah, the daily rate, we're, in the contract for this year is three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents a day.
Three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents daily? Times, and we multiplied it by the forty-eight buses that are not running. Three fifty-six, ninety-five, times forty-eight. That's, so, okay, so that was seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twelve cents a day. That, am I correct?
Well, then you're gonna take point eight of that.
Okay.
That's what we're paying.
Okay, so we're paying this for buses that are just sitting there?
Yes. But with the intention that we've had many stops and starts that we were going to go. We weren't going to go back to school. We need to have the drivers ready. If we simply said, okay, drivers, we're not paying you anything. We're only going to pay for the buses we use. Many districts in the state around here are using buses. They could use drivers. The drivers want to get paid, so they would go to the other districts. So we decided to do it this way. So when the decision was made, we're going back to school, we would have drivers available.
And last, from March until June, we paid everybody across the board because we felt...
We also, we, yes, but we also paid the eighty percent. We never paid the full amount.
Okay, so, so we're still paying for people not to go to work and for people not to drive the buses, for forty-eight buses.
Yeah, about half the buses, yeah.
About half the buses. I just have a hard, I don't want to see anybody out of work. I know we need buses, but you know what? We keep moving the start date. I'm wondering if these kids are ever going to get back to school this year. And we're just paying again for people not to be driving. How do you justify this? People not working, and we're paying them out of a budget. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Mrs. Brown?
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but do, we don't actually pay the drivers directly, correct? They are, they are part of our contract with the bus company?
Correct. We pay the bus company the rate per day, and they pay the drivers.
So we just kind of assume that the rate that we're giving them, they are going to pass on to the drivers?
No, we have an agreement with, for a student that if we pay these amounts, the full or the eighty percent, they will definitely pay the drivers. They can't keep it for themselves. They, we've been pretty clear about that.
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad that's...
They don't want to lose, they don't want to lose their drivers either. You know, they're hard to find. The last few years, our biggest problem in transportation was getting enough drivers.
Yep. I gotta admit, I'm actually kind of having a hard time stomaching this with Ms. Johnson as well. Forty-eight is a lot, is a big number of buses. I'm glad that it's written in our contract that we're, we have to, they have to pass our payments on to the drivers to keep them employed. But forty-eight is a big number of buses just sitting there in the budget.
So let me ask a question. I did it, the rate of eighty, eighty percent times forty-eight buses, and how many weeks have we paid this for already?
Through December, it was probably about nine or ten weeks.
So I'm calculating about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars, about eighty cents that we're paying, that we pay to date on buses that are just sitting there. Ms. Brown, do you have another question?
No, I guess it's more of a comment. I mean, I recognize that this isn't that number, and the fact that the buses aren't being used right now is not going to really make anybody happy. But the fact that we've signed a contract, is there really anything that we can do to edit that at this point? I mean, are we just, are we just sitting here talking about something that's just going to get us all more frustrated? Or is there actually anything that we can edit in that?
If we chose, I guess we could, we could say to them, we're only going to pay you for the bus as you're driving. That, like I said, the risk we take, based on the way the motion was, let's say, a month from now, kids are suddenly going back to school, then you're not going to have enough drivers to get the kids to school. So in my mind, I understand. It's frustrating for me also that we push this off and off and off and off. But if we finally get to that point where they're coming back, and then we can't provide bus drivers to bring them back, I see that as even a worse, that's worse than paying the eighty percent at this point, in my mind. Now, if we never go back all year, but, I don't know.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate your perspective, Dan. I think you're right. It sounds like, almost like we're paying an insurance policy, a really, really, really expensive one. You know, maybe we, as we get closer to the end of the year, if it doesn't seem like there's any kind of drop-off in the COVID numbers on the horizon, we can consider making the call to stop this big expenditure.
Yep, I mean, that's a possibility. I just, in my opinion, I don't think right now is the time to do it.
Now, do we have anything in the contract? I remember when we wrote, I had some issues. Did we put anything in the contract about paying this? Or I know we had something with the gas, that the gas stays low.
Gas is all up to them. There's no up or down in the gas. We get rid of that clause totally in the contract.
I know we changed some things in the contract. I'd have to dig it out. Okay, anyway, we can move on from this.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that's the transportation costs. And then on the top of page three, you see the tuition out of district. For those of you like Dottie that's been on the committee here for a while, that's the line item that we typically overrun significantly each year. As we put the budget together for this year, which we're working on currently, we'll talk more about this. I expect because of the strange type of year it is, that we'll have enough money in the total budget to cover the overrun here. But most of our out-of-district students are still, we're still paying for them. So this line item will, as you can see, year-to-date, we're at three point one million, and we've only got left two point four million, another five months of schooling, five and a half months of schooling. So we do expect that number to be closer to six million. We do have a process in place, I think, as I've explained before. We meet at the end of every month and go through student by student, so we can get a good sense of what the total number's going to be. There's, there's constant changes to that, but we can at least get within a reasonable, reasonable cost number. We did not do that meeting at the end of December due to the holidays, but we'll do it again in January. So hopefully, next month, I'll have a better sense of what we think the total cost there will be.
So our students that are out of district, are they going to their schools, or are they, do you know?
Most of them, I think, are going. There are some that are remote, but I think some of them are going. Or, and keep in mind, some of the more expensive ones are residential, so those students are in fact there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Okay, next set is supplies and materials. Not really too much to say there. Not a lot of spend during this month. Sort of a shortened month with the holidays, so a little, that's, that's not widely expected. Other expenses, that's the indirect cost. That's the revenue that comes back in for the grants. And we're catching up on, on all those. So you can see the last two months, we've had thirty-five and thirty-three thousand. So we should be able to reach our budget there. Then there's the equipment line items. As you can see, computer equipment, you buy most of it early in the year. So no issues there. On the last page there, four of five, the miscellaneous equipment was a little higher than it's been running. Took a look, and most of what that is this month is plan operations, thirteen thousand of that number is plan operations. They purchased some new cleaning equipment that was in the budget. So other than that, there were a bunch of small items, one thousand, two thousand type items. And then that sort of, sort of brings us to the end. You'll notice the budget adjustments, and the very last line, it says expense transfers to other funds. That's usually where that credit comes from, the, the sports funds. And we collect them all in a special revenue fund, then we put the credit here. So we budgeted a higher credit than we're going to get this year. So in a sense, that will be over budget, if you look at it that way. It's a negative number, so it's the opposite of that. But that's where you'll see that, that activity in the actual ledger doesn't show up till the end when we make the entries. But the decision to give the credit, and I don't disagree with it at all, but that's, that's the line it will affect. Okay, and just the last point on the financial report, you'll notice in the bottom right-hand corner on this page, the spend percent thus far is forty-three point six eight percent. A tip, a simple little thing to do is say, okay, we're six months through the fiscal year, so that would be a fifty percent. so that would be a fifty percent spend. We're forty percent through the school year. That would be a forty percent. So the number at this end should typically between, between these two numbers and it is. So just a, a, a big thing that I look at each to make sure that nothing's too crazy. So that's a quick rundown of the expenses. Like I said, we're working on the budget and hopefully we'll have that available for the board in early February.
Any questions from members of the committee?
I'm all set.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the FY twenty-one December financial report?
So moved.
Second, I'll second it. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we have the FY twenty-one December transfer report.
Okay, the first item is transfer in athletics. The, and I'm not a hundred percent sure if they'll end up spending all these funds based on having to put things off, but Lisa Jengris moved money from her tournament fee to rentals. As you're aware, the Fairgrounds Middle School is under construction, so the basketball team at that middle school did not have any place to practice. So they were going to pay a rental to the, I think it's the Girls Inc. Court over on Arlington Street, somewhere over there. So that was a transfer to do it. We'll see how much they actually use that, that court based on the changes, but Lisa at least made the entry, so the funds are available. The second one, this is simply a case, all, you'll notice in the beginning, they're all nine-nine-nine-nine under the accounting unit. These were all the new positions that we budgeted in the budget. When we put them into the budget each spring or winter, we don't know exactly what schools where all these teachers are gonna end up, so we budget to this nine-nine-nine. This is simply moving them from the budget nine-nine-nine to the actual schools and programs that they worked in. So that's more of a budget cleanup than anything else. The next one is a special ed transfer. A, a teacher resigned. We still need to provide the services to the students. We were not able to get a, another teacher to replace that teacher. So we moved the funds out of labor into contracted services and we're contracting those services out. Contracted services will cost us more than an employee does, but we figured we'd use this in the beginning to get the, decrease the costs. The next transfer is the North CTE program, simply moving a thousand dollars from laundry cleaning, which I think is typically used in the cooking program and maybe the, the hair program. They do some cleaning of, of outfits that the students wear to conferences and seminars. It's a small amount. Okay, and then the next one is another, another special education. We're basically the same thing, a, an unfilled position that they could not get for the special ed for this year. We still need to provide the services to the students, so we moved it from labor to contracted services so that we could get an outside source to do that work for us. And then the second last one is back to our legal account. We got to the point where we couldn't pay any legal because we had overrun the account. So I took twenty thousand dollars from electricity, knowing that that account will be well below budget this year. So I took it and moved that into the legal to, so we could pay those invoices. And the last one is, okay, basically the same thing as the other one related to the budget. In the budget, we had four kindergarten pairs, so we took it out of the nine-nine-nine and moved them to the four schools where the kindergarten pairs were hired. So once again, that's sort of just a accounting budget cleanup type entry. Any questions on those?
I don't have any questions on those, but I do have a question on the conference and seminars for a thousand dollars. Is that multiple teachers or is that just the director?
I'll find out for you, Dottie. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one, because you'll notice it doesn't have the reason below it. So I noticed that yesterday, but I didn't get an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden, because I was gonna ask the same question. Ms. Brown, do you have any questions? Okay, so.
Motion to approve the transfer report for December twenty-twenty.
I'll second it. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, and that seems to be the end of our agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? At this point, any questions on anything else?
I would say, I was gonna say, I think I, we really should keep an eye on that bus contract as we move forward. I think it's something to consider for a cost savings and just for practical reasons. Because there's gonna be some other costs that are gonna pop up that are gonna be COVID-related. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Oden?
I just want to thank Mr. Donovan for always having his figures right in place and, and knowing where we have the money and where we don't. So thank you, Mr. Donovan.
And I think everybody realizes that I'm always consistent with my questions. Pretty much so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Motion to adjourn?
I was just gonna ask that. So moved. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And we're adjourned at seven-seventeen. Have a wonderful night, everybody.
You too.